And welcome to our February 6, 2017, meeting of the Gaston County Board of Education. This is our work session here at Gaston County Schools World Headquarters on Ossioila Street. So, my name is Kevin Collier. I'm the chairman, and to my left is Mr. Jeff Ramsey. He is the vice chair. He's an at-large representative. I represent the Riverbend Township. I'm gonna start over here to my far right and let each board member introduce themselves.
Dot Cherry, at-large member.
Thank you, board members. On behalf of the board, I'd like to welcome everyone here this evening. Our next order of business is to adopt the agenda. Everyone's had a chance to look at the agenda. If there's no changes, there's a motion by Ms. Cherry to adopt, second by Mr. Dedman. All those in favor, show by raising your hand, and that's unanimous. Alright, that gets us down to item number three on our agenda, School Board Recognition Month, and I'm gonna turn that over to Mr. Hagan.
Good evening, Chairman Collier, Vice Chairman Ramsey, members of the board, and Superintendent Booker. Tonight, we would like to take time to express our sincere appreciation to members of the Gaston County Board of Education in celebration of School Board Recognition Month. National School Board Recognition Month is usually observed in January, however, since our January board meeting was part of the work session retreat, we moved the recognition to tonight so that it would be seen on Channel 21. Each year, we take pride in recognizing and honoring the nine citizens who serve on the Gaston County Board of Education. Our board members are business professionals, community advocates, and civic leaders who care about the children of Gaston County Schools and the future of our community. Our Board of Education members epitomize service to others through hard work, leadership, commitment, and expertise in guiding the public schools here in Gaston County. We are a better school system because of the nine people who serve on the Board of Education and because of our superintendent of schools. This year, to help us recognize and pay tribute to our Board of Education members and Superintendent Booker, we chose an elementary school for each board member and had a class at the school to adopt the board member. Tonight, representatives from the 10 schools are here to present a framed picture to the class, of the class, to the board member along with a special thank you card. And as you notice, we have a full house tonight, and the way this will work is we will ask each school to come forward when I call your name. We ask for the students to come forward along with their teacher and their principal, and they will make the presentation to the board member, and we'll ask each board member as I call your name to come down forefront for that presentation. So we will begin this evening with our chairman, Board of Education Chairman Kevin Collier. To honor Mr. Collier, who represents the Riverbend Township, are Lily Rankin and Morgan Wog, who are students in Melissa Combs' 3rd grade class at Kaiser Elementary. With Ms. Combs and the students are Kaiser Principal Lorraine De Bruyse.
Thank you. Oh, thank you for all you do for our schools, and it's signed by everyone in your class? My goodness. That is great. Oh, now, let me see, where are you guys? Ah, front row, I like it though. Right. Thank you so much. Thank you.
And we would like to get a picture with the group and with Mr. Collier. Well, I wanna be down here with him.
Okay. and Cecilia McCollum, who are students in Beth Crosby's 5th grade class at McAdenville Elementary. With the students and Mrs. Crosby, who is our current Gaston County Teacher of the Year, is McAdenville Principal Linda Neely.
Thank you so much for all you do for our schools. I'm truly grateful.
This is Christmas Town, USA.
Best place on earth.
That's right. Alright, so, where y'all going? I haven't heard the sound. Well, this is my life here on the school board, and it's a privilege to serve all of y'all too. Y'all ready for the middle school? Alright.
We're in there.
Let's get a picture then.
I don't think, I get the stamp these two.
Some of them are young, but you don't need them.
With a presentation to Mr. Lee Dedman, who represents the Gastonia Township, are Liam Buckner and Andrew Reimer from Brookside Elementary School. They are in Kinsey Wallace's 3rd grade class. With them is Brookside Principal Logan McGuire.
Yeah. I like the hat. Here, I'm gonna let you handle it today. You think I'm tall? And I'm gonna be like them, I can point you out, you are right. Oh, no, that's not you. Sure? Oh, you know the number, good job. That is very nice. That is really special, thank you so much. I really appreciate that. Are you a basketball fan?
Yes.
Did you see that?
Yes, sir.
Primary School, Ben Hammerick and Mackenzie Gerald. They are students in Carla Fletcher's kindergarten class. With Mrs. Fletcher and the students is Page Principal Lynn Whiteside.
Yeah, it's like winning the Super Bowl without the concussion.
Am I gonna go somewhere? Oh, that's gonna happen.
Now, is this for you, is that right? I don't get to keep it for us?
No, ma'am. This'll be my third one of these guys, and this is probably the reason why I've stayed on the board, is because I keep getting these. Now, here's where you're lucky, and I'm gonna challenge the other board members behind me. The other two that gave me one of these, like, within the week, they got a whole basket full of snacks and stuff. So, we'll see if the other board members do it, but thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you for all that you do.
Thanks, sir. Thank you, ma'am.
Chris, we fit, it's probably more than I did sure.
Yeah, well, you know, here's the difference in us, is I'm gonna have to get on my knees a little bit. Alright, you gotta turn around. Oh, 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 I gotta tell you what. I'm gonna hold the balloon, you hold the card.
You wanna hold the frame then? Hold the frame, there you go.
Oh, you got the balloon.
It's perfect, love it.
You gotta come and tie it up.
Okay. Alright, here we go.
Look like y'all won the Super Bowl, won it, didn't ya? We did.
Next, we recognize Terry Usri, who represents the Charrival Township. With us are Marlena Morgan and Jayden LaFeveres from Tryon Elementary School. To honor Mr. Usri, they are students in Shelley Smith's 4th grade class, and with them is their principal Todd Dellinger.
Because when we were making Mr. Usri's card on Friday, he kind of found us doing stuff, so we almost got caught. Yes, there you were, right in the middle of us. So then I made him take pictures with us too. I was like, oh, why don't you take some pictures while you're here? We have him in there.
This will have a prominent place in my house for all of my guests to see, and all of my other Tryon members of the area. The perfect place to learn, is it not, Mr. Butler?
Still the perfect place.
All of the Gaston County, and all of the world, it is the perfect place, and these perfect students, thank you very, very much. I do appreciate you guys.
We appreciate all you did for us kids, they have the unique experience of them being your students, they're your kids.
Absolutely. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Turn around, let's get a picture.
Dellinger over here. Each student here, so you're clapping the card they made for you. You gotta hold on to these ones. You gotta share.
You hold that, you hold that. I'll stand in behind this one. See, I should be an at-large member of the board too. I look at large.
Now, we'd like to honor Catherine Roberts, who represents the Dallas Township. From Costner Elementary School, we have Taylor Boone and Marcus Smith. They are students in Sheila McLean's 3rd grade class. With them tonight is their assistant principal, Allison Run.
Hey, guys. I got my snaggy dress on. There's Taylor. And I'll draw them right there. Thank you, let's see the cards. This is one of my favorite days. It's a secret, so I'm not reading it out loud. Listen, have you guys ever seen the movie Up? If you want his autograph, you can go get it in a little bit, okay? Thank you so much. Now, I try to come visit my cousin.
I'm trying to figure out why they bought mine autograph, not hers.
Okay, now we're still in, when you're ready?
To recognize Dot Guthrie, who represents the Gastonia Township, are Jessica Greer and Angelique Herrera from Lingerfeld Elementary School. They are students in Tanya Jenkins' 4th grade class. With them is their principal Stacy Bradley.
Looks like a book. Let's see. Oh, Mrs. Guthrie, thank you for all that you do for Lingerfeld Elementary School. Well, you know my heart is at Lingerfeld, you remember how it used to be the librarian there? So, I love books. You read? You like books? Okay, let's see. You are a great, greatly appreciated board member. Oh, look at the dots, I love dots too. Thank you for so actively influencing Gaston County Schools, I appreciate all of you. Thanks for who you are, loves us. This is just awesome. I want you to know that as much love as you put into this card, I have that much love for you, your school, your principal, and your teachers, and parents that support you. Thank you so very, very much. I appreciate that. And you know what else would make me extremely happy? If you'll continue to read. Oh, you are very welcome, my pleasure. Thank you. Thank you. Well, we either won, or we're here too. I never, ever miss a chance to encourage our young people to read. Thank you so much for all that you do.
Oh, wait, I need to see my, I got some carried away with me. Now, I'm going to ask you to identify yourselves. Show me where you are. Good. S. K. I'll remember that. S and K. Thank you.
You can have you hold the flag, Miss Guthrie. Each child can hold one of the cards.
Oh, that would be wonderful. Let's call them books.
Books.
from Bessemer City Central Elementary School, Montana Niderer and Kayla Summy. They are students in Kelsey Hensley's 4th grade class. we have Nysir Greer and Markell Greer, who are in Darlene Byers and Clarissa Sanders' 5th grade class at Pleasant Ridge Elementary School. We also have Malika Nash with us, along with their principal Glenn Cook.
Thank you so much. Oh, I got a picture. I saw, these are the, let me start up, it's Monday. For you that don't know, these gentlemen are in the lead class at Pleasant Ridge, and I've met them several times at Hunter House. And this past Friday night, they put on a little halftime show for us at the basketball game, and rocked the house out there. They got a standing ovation at halftime. So, I'm very, very proud of them, and thank y'all so much, and you too, this is our future lead. Thank you so much for doing so well in class, and thank you for this. I have my other one on the wall, and I'm probably gonna hang this right beside it, and people ask me all the time, "Why'd you get this?" I say, "Well, some of them like me." So, thank you so much, this is some of my most precious items.
Picture, you have a smile, okay?
Okay.
You have a smile.
I need to get a picture of him.
He wasn't a good, no, just good.
We can try and try.
That's too close to this cherry, there you go.
There he is. Wow. You know what, I can't see. Last one, big smile. Thank you.
And to honor Superintendent Booker this evening, we have Anaya Walker and Autumn Grendel, who are students in Rosalie Ronanelli, Rhonda Nelly, Close 3rd Grade Class at HH Beam Elementary School, and with them is HH Beam Principal Laura Polk.
Pass that around, both of you.
Ms. Guthrie.
Mr. Chair, if the boys and girls are still in the room, I would like to congratulate them all if you would just have them walk around and greet the board members. Is that okay?
Yes.
Well, they're already here.
They're already here.
Congratulations, thank you for being here tonight.
Thanks, we got you.
Thanks for being here tonight. Thank you so much for being here tonight.
Thank you so much. Thank you for being here tonight. Thank you for being here tonight. Thank you for being here tonight. Thank you.
I appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
Seriously. Smile, he's always serious.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, sir, we appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Collier, we would like to thank all of the children for being here this evening, and a special thank you to their parents, teachers, assistant principals and principals for helping us with our Board of Education recognition. All of us in Gaston County Schools, the students and teachers, employees and parents, appreciate what you do as our Board of Education, and we thank you for taking good care of our schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hagan, and thank you for everyone who came out tonight, that's wonderful, just wonderful. Alright, our next item is Parent Academy, Dr. Bocknight.
Good evening, members of the board, Superintendent Booker, Chairman Collier. Tonight I have with me Mr. Ross, who, as you all recall, last spring I requested permission to...
Good evening, members of the Board, Superintendent Booker, Chairman Collier. Tonight I have with me Mr. Ross, who as you all recall, last spring I requested permission to utilize Title I funding to bring in someone to work with our community and with our parents. And so, Mr. Ross has been in that position since July 1st and has made several inroads with our community and with our parents. And he's going to share some of that information to follow up as a request of this board as to where we're moving with this position. So, I'm very excited to share information with you from Mr. Ross.
Good evening. Chairman Collier, Vice Chairman Ramsey, school board members, Mr. Booker. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak with you tonight. When I first took this position, I was very excited about the opportunity. The opportunity to meet with our community and help our community embrace our children and embrace our schools to help us become a stronger system. So, some of the things I'll talk about tonight will be some of the projects we have going on currently. In March, we will have our Parent Academy. We will have it at two different places. We will have it at the Hunter Hus feeder area on March 18th, 2017. We will also have it on March 25th at Bessemer City High School. And that would be the Bessemer City, all the schools that feed into Bessemer City. And we're very excited about that. Those are some of our Title I schools. And we're very excited about those two dates coming up in March. And as you can see, we have a lot of different elementary and middle schools that will be a part of that. And so, we're just thankful to have that opportunity. I've already met with Bessemer City High School and Hunter Hus. And they have been so gracious in helping us get everything ready. The sessions that we will have at the Parent Academy, we will have Getting Involved. And that will be a session for my parents and we'll have that at the beginning. The thing that I like about Getting Involved is that we will use some of our parents in Gaston County Schools to come and talk to our parents. And it's a good thing to hear things from my parents who are going through the same things that we go through. And the one thing that I'm excited about is that our parents are getting geared up for that. And I believe they'll have a lot of take-home things to give to our parents as far as using our technology and other things that they can do at home to help our students. We will also have math and reading. I've been working with the curriculum facilitators in the county. And what we're trying to do is give them, again, some take-home type things and activities that they can use with their children at home. When we talk about the different reading and math strategies that we have out there, we really want to help our parents understand that they can help our children at home. And that is, you know, we really want to give them some strengthening strategies and really help them overcome some of their fears with helping our students. As far as preparing for college, we will have 8th grade parents there. So, we will have counselors from both high schools that will be there to talk about what to expect when they enter high school. They will also go over some of the things that they will need to know as far as getting prepared for college, how to go to the different websites and sign up and do the different things to get prepared. And we will also have the career and technical education side to that as well. And so, we will have presentations from our career and technical teachers. And they'll get to also go around on both campuses and look at some of those classes. So, not only will they get the college side, but they will also get the career and technical education side, which we think is vital here in Gaston County. So, we're very excited about that.
Questions or comment? Mr. Howell?
Just a quick comment question. Mr. Ross, I appreciate what you're doing. I've had several people in the community call me and say, "Do you know this big old guy named Torben Ross?" And I'm like, "Yes," and do whatever he says because I don't know anybody bigger. Second thing is, on the Parent Academy, I know you're doing it at two different locations, which I think is good. And I think you're doing it in kind of a concentrated area. But I think our Title I kind of expands beyond that. So, are you going to video those or are we getting the AV media department involved so we can video those and put them on Facebook on the school website or on our school's website, our Facebook page, school website, or on Channel 21 to where maybe some of the other ones can see that as well? And so, if you do it in a different area, maybe it prompts some questions they can ask and better inform, you know, have some better informed questions, that sort of thing. Is that possible to do or would you rather kind of that be a face-to-face meeting initially wherever you go and then put it on a media platform?
Mr. Howell, we have done some of that in the past and recorded those and put them on Channel 21. We've done our College Expo, so that's not something that we've put in this initial rollout. But that's something certainly that we still have time to prepare for. So, great suggestion.
Mr. Howell, Mr. Dedman.
Torben, how are you going to try to get more, try to get parents there? I mean, what methods or things are you doing to ensure that you have some people show up? Because a lot of times people don't show up for things, even if they're good things.
One of the ways, I know we used the original ways of connect ed and sending letters home. But one of the things we discovered at Lingerfeld when I was the principal that whenever we make face-to-face contact with our parents, whenever you make a phone call, let's say for instance, we get the homeroom teachers to call their homeroom students' parents and invite them to come out. Or even when they come to pick them up on the car line, the different things like that, talk to them and say, "Hey, we have this program coming. Would you please come out?"
So, you have a plan to do that?
Yes, sir. We are going to work with the Title I schools in doing that.
And Mr. Dedman, if I may add, last year, if you all recall, we had the literacy event at Tabernacle and we had overwhelming success. A part of that was that we provided a full day opportunity for families. They were fed lunch, lots of literacy events that included books, Ms. Guthrie. And as Mr. Ross indicated, we did a lot of over-communicating with schools. And so, we were very pleased with our response. So, we intend to continue to do more of that. And to Mr. Ross's credit, he's gone to lots of local churches and to community groups to already spread the word and will continue to do so, which is the piece that we did not have last year.
I didn't see who's, Ms. Cherry.
Mr. Ross, have y'all determined the timeframe? Is it going to be just, say, from until noon? Or is it going to be an all-day affair? And are there going to be breakout groups? Or is it just going to be one, one big meeting?
The time will be from 9:00 to 12:00.
Okay.
And we'll start all together and then we will break out into breakout groups.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Roberts.
Actually, Ms. Cherry asked several, too, what I was going to ask. I think that you're going to have it in English and Spanish. It's supposed to be those sessions will be on the same day and time, 4:00, Spanish speaking, separate day.
What we do have, we're working with Ms. Anna Matthews and it'll be the same day. And she'll have her groups of Spanish-speaking parents. And we'll be doing the same type of classes with that, but it'll be on the same day.
Ms. Guthrie.
Mr. Ross, I have several questions. One, well, I'll comment first. I want to applaud you for the work that you've done. I too have heard many wonderful things from the community about your work and the, your passion for what you're doing in the community. It's so important if you want parental involvement in our schools for them to certainly understand what's happening within the schools and feel like they can effectively communicate with school personnel. As I speak about school personnel, what are the schools doing to embrace these parents when they come to the schools? Because many of them may not know how to effectively communicate with school personnel. So, are we going to do something with school personnel as well? Because we don't want to see you doing all the work out there to get these parents to come in and then they're met with some type of resistance or whatever.
Yes, ma'am. What we are doing, we are, I'm visiting the schools and talking with the staffs and principals as well. And we'll make sure that, you know, any questions they have, we'll be able to help them. But I will tell you, our schools do a great job of embracing our parents. And so, I'm excited about that. That's one of the best parts about it. And so, I think our schools will be very excited about it. And I think they'll work together with me and we'll definitely have a great turnout.
I have one more.
Yes, ma'am.
There's a little module perhaps that we could help with at my church, Project Invest. I would like to see some type of overlapping there with some parents from the community and you and the Tabernacle Baptist Church partnering with that program. So, I'd like to speak with you further about that to see if we can make that happen.
Yes, ma'am. We can definitely do that.
Thank you.
Ms. Cherry.
Nice comment. And this goes back to what Mr. Howell was saying. I would assume that if a friend of somebody from Bessemer City's heard about it and they went to South Point and they wanted to come, that they, they could go. Yes, no?
Yes, ma'am. We won't return it. The thing is, it is a Title I program. But if I have a parent come wanting to learn more, they're more than welcome.
Okay.
I think that's good because information is powerful. And it doesn't matter whether it's Title I or just general. Parents are parents and they need to be empowered. So, I like to hear that. Thank you.
To Mr. Ross's credit, that it is a Title I funded grant and we have to report out. So, that's why we have the strong emphasis in our 22 Title I schools. We started in our two heavily feeder areas that are Title I. And so, that's where we're going to start. We're starting with two and hope to continue to grow this more each year. But of course, any parent that comes to a Title I event is more than welcome.
Any more questions or comments? Mr. Ross, thank you very much. We look forward to hearing how well this does. That takes us down to item number six on our agenda, the athletic contract. For information, Ms. Bocknight.
Yes, sir. I have Mr. Duncan, our athletic director, coming forward to share information with you about middle school athletics. We will actually have this policy information because this will require a policy change. And so, we'll share that information with you this week so that it can be previewed by the public as well as the board. And then, we'll bring it back to our regular meeting the third Monday for approval.
Good evening, Board of Education members. Chairman Collier, Mr. Booker, hello. August 4th, 2016, DPI passed where middle schools could have 6th graders participate. It was awful late for that decision to go through. So, what happened was we decided, it was just very difficult to try to get everything where all sports could actually do it. 26 of 82 did a survey back in early October and they're the only ones that did it. And mostly, it was rural counties that did it. A recent survey said 50 of 105 have now done it or are getting ready to do it, with more this next year probably going to take it on. So, that is what we are here about. Some things that, in talking to all my middle school athletic directors and principals, there are some things that this would help. These sports that are listed, baseball, softball, golf, girls soccer, boys soccer and wrestling, at some of our schools, they do not have full rosters. They don't have, if they do have a full roster, they don't have substitutes to put in. So, this is one of those things that could definitely help. Also, our 6th graders come in and a lot of principals have stated that our 6th graders don't feel quite part of the school. So, this would allow them to feel included. And being a father of a 6th grader, it is a different scenario when he comes home and doesn't quite know what's after school for him to do as choices. And also, classroom accountability, a lot of our athletic directors felt that for the academics part, the attendance part, and for behavior, just getting to know our eligibility standards, this is a solid foundation that they can start in 6th grade. Plus, their parents will get to know about that, too. And that's all I have for that section.
Board, I apologize. This is Middle School Athletics, item number five on the agenda.
I'm sorry. I changed the order, Mr. Collier. I apologize.
No, you did not. I read it wrong. Ms. Roberts.
To consider some cons, you're going to have a bunch of kids that are going to try out that, you know, just like 7th and 8th grader are not going to make the team. We do have some schools that they'll have at least 50 tryout for boys or girls soccer. Well, that, that number's going to go up. So, there's going to be a lot that might not make the team. But 7th and 8th graders, there's already a lot of those, too.
Maybe talk about decreased time of the winter.
Same amount of kids, so there won't be additional uniforms needed. We're not, our size is not going to grow for these teams.
That, that is correct. If the basketball team has 15 players, they're not going to get more uniforms to have more players because still only five people can play at a time. And I do need to add this, and I'm sorry I didn't. Football, DPI stated football is not included in that. So, 6th graders are not permitted to play football at the middle school level.
Okay, thank you. We need to, we need to make sure we communicate that loud and clear because I know parents heard this as soon as it came down from DPI and they were making phone calls. So, we need to over-communicate that football is not a part of it. And that's from the state, correct?
That is correct.
And let's go ahead and over-communicate that it's coming from the state, too.
You through Ms. Roberts and Ms. Cherry.
I'm sorry. I know the answer. I just want to make sure that I'm on the same page. You said that this is not mandated. It's optional for each district. So, if we decide to do this, every middle school, it's not optional between schools. It's, it's our county, it's going to be our county policy. Okay? Just want to make sure.
Mr. Howell?
Mr. Duncan, would there be an academic standard for incoming 6th graders that they had to have kind of maintained in 5th grade? Like a 6th grade student going to 7th grade, if he fails his second semester of 7th grade, then he's not eligible for football his first semester of 8th grade. Is that correct? So, is there a standard coming in? If there's a standard, are we going to waive it if there's no standard?
There, there is no standard. Once they are told that they're going to be in 6th grade, that first semester of their 6th grade year, since it's just like a high school freshman. So, that is the comparison. It is the same. So, first semester 6th grader is eligible to participate in everything but football.
But we could say there is and maybe they'd do better on their test. Just saying.
The exciting part is that they will be involved in the athletic program, as Mr. Duncan said. So, that will push them to do even better second semester.
Mr. Ramsey?
Before anybody calls, does that include cheerleaders?
Yes, sir. And the reason why it is a board item, so that we can communicate this, it is a board item tonight because we will put some procedures in place for cheerleading. Because this would mean that 5th grade girls will be going over to the middle schools in the spring to try out for cheerleading. And we have a process already in place for high school with 8th graders going to the high school. We would use the same process for 5th grade girls going over to the middle school. Thank you, Mr. Ramsey, for bringing that up.
Last, last question. Well, that brings up another point, going back to Catherine. Will they keep the same numbers or will they think because they have a bigger pool that, that some middle schools will, we've had 20, we're going to have 25 cheerleaders now? Do they have a certain number, like high school?
Middle schools have flexibility, but it's all based on how many uniforms they have. So, historically, as Mr. Duncan described, there are some of our schools that struggle to fill their cheerleading squads. So, you may find a school that has struggled in the past, they may have a full squad this year. But no one is going out to purchase additional uniforms because of 6th grade.
So, do we have, keeping that in mind, too, we have the other end of the spectrum, too, that...
In talking with our athletic directors and our middle school principals and with staff, we are not supporting anyone necessarily going out to purchase additional uniforms. This is to be a no-expense add to middle schools. It's to allow all children to try out. As Mr. Duncan said, there may be a 6th grader that earned a spot on the squad, which will then, just like if a 7th grader takes a student's spot. So, that'll be something that we'll work through. But we are not doing this so that schools increase their numbers in any program at this point.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Roberts.
I just want to make sure I'm clear because I know I'm going to get a phone call. Cheerleaders especially will fundraise for their uniforms every year. So, I want to make sure there aren't any gray areas if we pass this. Because most other sports teams do not fundraise for their uniforms. They already have them.
They do fundraise, Ms. Roberts, and we have continued to talk about that with the board. But there are other sports that also fundraise other items, not as much as a high school cheerleader. I would agree with you. But we are still holding everyone accountable to what their rosters have been. There's some flexibility with cheerleaders if they have uniforms that they didn't utilize this year because they didn't have enough girls try out or they didn't, they still had some additional uniforms. But we are not planning to expand a cheerleading squad because of this. Because again, it's a supervision issue. We only allocate for the middle school to have a cheerleading coach and possibly an assistant. So, they would also have to stay within ratio as far as supervision. But we will definitely communicate that, Ms. Roberts. I agree with you. That will need to be communicated.
Ms. Guthrie and Mr. Howell?
Okay. I just want to ask one question. You are, Mr. Duncan, going to give the AD directors in the school some flexibility as far as deciding some of these things on their own, what best is the school right?
Are you saying roster size or...
Just, just general information, like the cheer number, cheerleaders and all of the other things that, yeah.
I think the flexibility comes in, Ms. Guthrie, for example, how many days they hold tryouts. But we are... But we are consistent with necessarily how many kids they're going to hold for soccer because then it becomes a process of how many children can you supervise. So we're going to support schools and work with them based on their needs at their schools. It's not going to be a hard anything because our cheerleading squads are different sizes already.
That's what I mean.
But we're going to stay within those parameters, yes ma'am.
Mr. Howell.
Dr. Bocknight, it's my impression that cheerleading is one of those, and this is a, get back to me later thing, that cheerleading was a pay-to-place for middle school all the way through high school, that we didn't provide uniforms, pom-poms, bags, hair bows, shoes. Can you just let me know if that's true countywide, middle school through high school of all of our schools? Or if we have some that we provide for? You can take that off the record.
Yes, sir, I can provide a spreadsheet for you, but that is pretty consistent, other than when you get to the hair bows and those sorts of things.
Any more questions or comments? With none, Mr. Duncan, thank you very much. That brings us to item number six now, our athletic contract.
We work with Caramont for our athletic trainers, and it's a great partnership that we have. We do share the costs, and we are looking for a three-year service contract with them. We have talked to them multiple times. I am in constant contact with Trent Hayes, who oversees the five athletic trainers. So we are in constant contact about this. But I didn't know if everybody knew exactly what all Caramont does for us, besides the athletic trainers. When a trainer is, can't be at one of those games, they also send, I wish I knew all the exact letters of PRN. I'm not exactly sure. But they send somebody certified that knows exactly what to do if there's an injury. So we are covered when it comes to home events at our high schools. But they do also provide our student-athlete physicals. This is a Saturday event, usually the first Saturday in June. They're there from at least eight in the morning until noon, and every school has their own established time that they show up. And this is a very small fee for, to go get a physical, which is obviously required every 395 days for all of our student-athletes. And they also provide for our coaches a symposium, and this is at Caramont. This is to give our coaches some more knowledge related to diet for their student-athletes, also related to injuries and how to deal with some of the injuries, but also injury prevention. So they do a lot for us, and they work well with us. That's it.
Any questions or comments? Ms. Roberts.
Are the coaches required to go to the training that's given to them through Caramont?
They are not required. They also, if they do go, they get CEUs. But it is, it's a great thing, knowledge-wise. They are required to go to their coaches' meeting in the summer, but this is something that's added. And some of them have taken tremendous advantage of it. I wish more would, and we keep pushing it, so hopefully more do that.
It's continuing education credits, and in addition to, one of the things that we continue to work through, which is why Chad does a really good job with our required coaches' meeting. We offer it multiple times in that day because a lot of our coaches come from the community, and they have full-time jobs. So the symposium is offered during the work hours, and some of our coaches unfortunately cannot participate.
Ms. Cherry.
I'm just curious, and I think Caramont does a wonderful job. The incremental increases, is that due to just the cost of things? Are we adding more services or another staff person? Or, because it's about $30,000 a year, is there something that's being added, or is that just inflation?
Lots of things. It's the cost of the employees, also some of the Fair Labor Standards Act's changed. Act changed when we started the contract, and now, so they're having to work with those employees on a different salary schedule, so that is impacting the partnership. So they're still bearing the majority of the cost for the trainers. And we've even looked to see if we were able to do this ourselves, and we still could not do this at this cost for ourselves internally, in addition to finding the employees because they're very difficult to find.
Mr. Howell.
Mr. Duncan, since we're employing Caramont help in game situation, practice situation, in injury situation, who has the authority? Does Caramont's trainers have the authority to whether that student comes out of the game, stays in the game, goes for treatment, doesn't go for treatment, or does the coach and the AD have the authority?
The athletic trainer.
Okay, thank you.
They're the medical professional.
Mr. Dedman.
That was my question, but I wanted to add it, I thought of another one. How many positions, is it five?
There are five.
And they rotate, I mean, and they send the P, N, C, W, X, Y there, too?
Thank you.
Do we have any extra charge for that, or is that included in everything?
It's all included in it.
Okay. And they're required at practices, every practice for football?
No, they're not. Most of the time, they'll go to one practice, then go to the other. But we have a first responder.
Exactly, yeah.
At our practices, yes.
Mr. Ramsey.
Yeah, I go to a lot of games, as you all know. It looks like concussion protocol works very well. And it's in all sports. We always think it's football, but I've seen it in basketball and soccer and everything. And them trainers will go grab them, take them to the side, and like you said, it's their call. The coaches don't get involved or anything in that. So it's been good to see.
I'll have to agree with Mr. Ramsey. I mean, it's almost like what the NFL does. The first thing a trainer do would take the football player's helmet and make sure they can't go anywhere or try to go back into the game. So, and they're very serious, and the coaches that I know said it's the trainer's call. They, as bad as they may want a player back on the field, they do not play around with the trainer's decision. Any more questions or comments?
That gets us down to item number seven, school calendars. Year 2017, 2018, year 2018, 2019. Mr. Clinton, Ms. Maddox? Okay. Mr. Clinton. While he's getting there, I just got asked, have any board members been involved in any of the calendar committee meetings before? I'd encourage you to, I'd encourage you to go if you really want to see how tied hands are in coming up with a calendar.
Booker and board members. I'm going to present as an information item, 2017, 2018, and 2018, 2019 draft calendars. I'd like to begin by acknowledging and thanking all of the stakeholders that helped develop the calendars over a two-month period back in October, October and November. There were over 29 different stakeholders from across Gaston County that helped participate on the calendar committee. We were fortunate to have teachers, teacher assistants, parents, students, administrators, central office staff, and community business leaders to participate on this committee. So we're very fortunate there. To begin, I'm just going to go through the slide presentation, and then at the end, if you have any questions, please feel free to ask. The calendar creation process, of course, as we were developing the calendar, we wanted to involve as many stakeholders as possible. We came up and devised a list of 45 different people from across our county. And of course, as large as Gaston County is, you have to encumber lots of different people. And so we sent out some feelers and some information to different people that we thought would be vital to this calendar committee. The calendar law, which is 2012 Senate Bill 187, applies beginning with the 2013, 2014 school year. And it rewrites a portion of the calendar law under General Statute 115(c)(84.2). And that's the governing part of the calendar law that really dictates when a calendar begins, how long the calendar is, certain holidays in a calendar, and annual leave days. Lots of different things are dictated by this statute. Specific guidelines, and I'll go through a few of these just to make sure everyone's clear. The start date can be no earlier than the Monday closest to August 26th. And the end date, no later than the Friday closest to June 11th. So with those two dates in mind, it puts you in a, kind of in a box there with what you can do in between. Draft calendars must cover at least nine calendar months. And the two calendars that we propose, or have proposed here, both do cover the nine-month period. Annual leave, you must have a minimum of 10 annual leave vacation days built into the school calendar. Instructional time, which is always the biggie, the one that we want to make sure that we encumber here, you must have a minimum of 185 days or 1,025 hours of instruction. And both calendars that we have submitted are right around 1,050, some, 56 hours, I think, to be exact. Teacher workdays, you must have at least nine teacher workdays. The local boards shall designate two workdays on which teachers may take accumulated vacation leave. Local boards may designate the remaining workdays as days teachers may take accumulated vacation leave. Holidays. Holidays, you have the same or an equivalent number of legal holidays occurring within the school calendar as those designated by the State Personnel Commission for state employees. One thing about the school calendar, Veterans Day is designated in all public schools as a public holiday. And inclement weather. In a draft calendar, you must submit inclement weather days. And on both of the calendars that we have for you to look at, inclement weather days have been submitted. We have seven days on each calendar, and that's what it's called for. Any questions regarding the calendar? Yes, sir, Mr. Howell.
Mr. Collier, Mr. Clinton, are we mandated by the state of how long or how short the school day is?
We're not mandated by the length. We are mandated by the number of instructional hours for a school year.
Because I'm just looking at the calendar, and the one thing that we fault since I've been on the board for four years is the start date, end date for, especially for the second semester, first semester. I know I saw the agenda for the instruction committee has an item on it. But at the current calendar, you have just for 1718, is that the first one? 1718, there's 96 hours of instruction time, give or take, not including lunches. That's where they count an eight-hour day. There's 12 days, 96 hours, which breaks down to about 1.28 days if we, or 1.28 hours if we added that to the first semester of the days that we're actually in school. I just think we do our kids and our teachers and everybody else injustice. I would like to see us explore maybe lengthening the day, adding some time to the beginning, the end, and getting that semester done. And then what that does for us at the end of the year is probably good, too. But I just know a lot of people that would be for that if they could end it when they want to end it versus where it is now. And I don't know if that's possible to do, or if that's going to take an act of Congress and a blessing of Ms. McGraw, so.
Okay. Staff or anybody want to address that? Or have we, have we looked at those options or considered them?
In this current calendar, that was something that we did, that has been an issue that someone did raise. The committee really looked at the previous calendars and kind of mimicked a lot of the same, same ideas that we had there. But yes, we're open for anything, as long as it complies to the statute.
This is for information tonight, and at our next board meeting on the 20th, this will be in front of us to adopt. So if there's more discussion to be had about options, I hesitate to send it back to committee, but I would just be curious to hear pros and cons from somebody that can talk on the point.
Mr. Howell.
Question for you, and this is an order of which we do things. If we adopted the calendar as proposed next board meeting, can we come back and amend the calendar at a later date, or is that like taboo? And so the question is, if we're not, then this is a work session. I'd like to, I'd like to hear some healthy discussion I'm working on. If I'm just the only one out there in left field picking daisies, or if that is something that is plausible and doable. Because like I said, I figured that 96 hours, on an eight-hour day, you take out lunch, then you're probably, you're probably looking at an hour a day for the first semester, and you're done by Christmas break, so.
If it's the board's pleasure, we can push the adoption date of the calendar back and maybe have this discussion when everybody's better prepared at our next meeting.
Ms. Cherry.
Let me ask a couple of questions first. Mr. Clinton, how many people are on this committee, first of all?
We had 29 different people on the committee. Now, not all 29 joined us at every meeting.
Okay, was it, was it basically an equal number for each group that you've gotten here from administrators, teachers, students, classified employees, the business professionals? Was it?
It was, it was pretty close, yes ma'am.
Okay. What type of, to go back to what Mr. Howell is asking, what type of concerns were, what were the three major concerns that this committee brought up as far as possible changes? Those are the things that I, you know, if we are going to table it and discuss, I'd like to know the things that, the important things that y'all, not that, not the little banter, the important things that were discussed in the meeting because there's no sense in us rehashing what this committee has already gone through.
Of course, the first thing, we wanted to stay within the statute, the rules there, of course.
We have to.
Right. And with that being said, the calendar has to cover at least nine months. So we looked at, okay, when's the start date? What's the best time to start school? And with that being said, we also looked at, from a standpoint, we added some extra days at the beginning because teachers in the room felt like it was important for them to get into their rooms. That was the one concern that every teacher in that, on the committee had. Hey, I don't have enough time at the beginning of the school year to get into my classroom and set it up the way I want to. The next concern that everybody, well, the elementary teachers had, and this was from across the calendar, is to make sure that we have two days built into the calendar for, or, excuse me, one in the first semester, one in the second, for parent-teacher conferences. Because that was something that we didn't have in the previous calendar. And so those were two big items right there. Of course, our testing department, we had some folks from testing that were on the calendar committee. They want, testing is always an issue at the end of the first semester simply because of the lag time between Christmas, you come back, and then when are you going to test? So we did look at, okay, if we back this up, what is that going to make the number of days look like? And how's that going to impede that? And what would we have to do to add extra time? And we decided to extend it and mimic the one we had simply because we know that that's something that our stakeholders are used to. And that was the reasoning behind it.
Well, then going back, if we do table this and come back to.
Well, this is information tonight. The question is, will we vote on it at our next board meeting or not?
Yes, or come back. If we don't vote on it, then I think it would be beneficial to me is to see some of those things that y'all seriously talked about, and the conclusion that came to you.
Well, and that's one of, we did add the extra time on the front, and then we do have two days built in for parent-teacher conferences, one in the fall, one in the spring. But we will be glad to explore the other items that Mr. Howell discussed there.
Ms. Roberts.
As far as testing.
If we're going to look at discussing this further, I would like to see, are there any? any other counties in North Carolina that have extended their day?
Yeah, we had some, well, we have calendars from Ourdale, Statesville, Cleveland County, and Charlotte Meck. And we looked at their calendars as we were developing the 1718 calendar, because their calendars are out there already.
But do they have, any of those counties, do they have an extended day?
No.
And I would really like to hear from stakeholders regarding that, especially teachers, because they're in there all the time, and they're going to know whether an extended day would be beneficial or not.
Right.
Mr. Booker?
This is great discussion, and we can give you examples of other, there are mountain counties that run some optional calendars. I know Yatkin County does what they call the 165 calendar that allow some flexibility. But there are more issues than just the attendance that goes on. You have, your whole community, as Mr. Clinton has alluded to, the pace of what we do, the time, we start all schools at the same time, 8 o'clock. You would have to look at that impact when you start extending your days. You would impact after-school plans, not only for childcare, but athletics, academic clubs and things. It's a big issue to, one that we're more than welcome to. You, as a board, have discussed an alternative program where you looked, starting with the middle of the summer. It's often referred to as a year-round program. It still has the same number of days, it just has larger breaks throughout the school year in it. So we'll be glad to give you a formative analysis of that, so you can see what some of our peer groups do.
Mr. Howell?
Mr. Booker, thank you for that. I'm not asking, and I guess, Mr. Clinton, if your committee is hammered out, do we add an hour every day, and can we get it in, and it's just, it's not feasible? Or if that's been looked at before, then I'm for table on my comment and saying I was stupid. If it hasn't been looked at, I'd like to see what the pros and cons are. Is it possible to do that? And then what does that look like? And, you know, for me, I'm not, I know Ms. Roberts, and with all due respect, said, you know, have you looked at other counties and what they're doing? I'm not necessarily that guy that says, look at what everybody else is doing, because somebody's got to lead out of the box and do something different that maybe gets the attention of Raleigh and says, wait a minute, they're having to add an hour? We could fix that. And so hopefully, you know, they would do that. The other part is, I'm glad you added a couple of days, because one of the things I've heard from a lot of teachers, and I won't say every teacher, and I won't say thousands of teachers, because that would be every teacher, but one of the things I've heard is, at the beginning, they have those days in there, but we're filling some of their days with mandatory meetings and the convocation, which I think is good, and this, you know, sermon series on this, but they're not getting time to do their room unless they come in a week before, which they're not getting paid to do. So I think that's good to do, but we need to figure out how to make that beneficial for them, too. To me, that would be a bigger complaint than having to stay an extra hour, so.
Ms. Guthrie?
I just simply wanted to say that it's important for us to actually consider that planning time for our teachers. They really, truly need that time. Some teachers are moving from one grade level to another, and they need to have time to collaborate with their peers and get to know the curriculum. That's very important. I also feel like if we have actually conducted the survey between the different departments and teachers and community folk, as well as parents, I feel like you've exhausted every possible way to have the most effective calendar for the school year. I know right now, we're dealing with three recommendations in Clover, and I just voted on one. But we need to think about the work that has already been done in trying to construct the calendar for the new school year, as well as showing consideration for our educators who are going to actually be a vital part in how successful our children are based on the calendar. So I just commend you for what you have done already, because I do believe that you put the thought into it already.
And I'll speak to, this year, we had the issue where we didn't have half-days built for elementary schools to have parent-teacher conferences. That was an adjustment that was made in the calendar, and we got a lot of feedback, and so they've tried to include that in these calendars. That's an adjustment that has been made. So, Ms. Guthrie, I think you're correct. We have to listen to our community and to the stakeholders. As Mr. Clinton said, you had over 20-some folks involved in the committee, most attending at least in that number of the total 29 that were available to be there. This is one of those that there is no right answer. You try to get the better answer that you can for this, because there's always a question, because one of the debates is the winter break, and what does the length of winter break need to be? You could gain several days looking at the week of winter break, but that, you take into effect where the teachers are and where our workforce is and the support among the community. So that's just one example of the conversations that go on in that committee and during those meetings.
Mr. Dedman?
One of the root problems is the state legislators have not, will not allow us to make the calendar. If every parent in our district, every parent in the state was complaining about the school calendar, they would allow us to make the school calendar. Right now, we don't have any choice. And if the two years I've been on the board, we'd be with our local delegation, and they'd just look at you and smile.
You're exactly right, Mr. Dedman. If you haven't ever visited it, Save Our Summers is a very powerful website that'll talk about all the debate around the school calendar in North Carolina.
Well, we have one that's very adamant that it's not broken right now, so you're probably going to email.
Hey, I welcome an email. This whole thing started about seven years ago because they needed more workers in South Carolina in summertime for the beach. I mean, parents need to realize that, you know, we're, our hands are tied, Mr. Clinton's hands are tied with that calendar. We really don't have much choice about anything that we need to have the authority to set our own school calendar. My years as a principal, those years that we finished up before Christmas and did our exams, test scores countywide were always higher than they are right now. So, you know, maybe all of our parents could call our legislators, or they could come meet with us if we meet with them again this year, because we will ask the same question again. Thank you, Mr. Howell.
Thank you. Well, I'm going to just make a comment, because you're going to say, there's Kevin talking about the old days, but I was around when the calendar was being done before we had the mandates from the state. And we did test before the end of the semester break. But the elementary people and middle school folks, for the most part, just came out of all the committee meetings, said, well, why are we here? Because the high school drives our calendar. The high school drives our calendar. And those were the complaints we used to hear all the time, is they seemed to have no say-so in the room because of high school testing, for the most part. And they worked very hard to accommodate the high school, and I could understand the elementary schools and parents' comments back in that day. So with that said, if we were trying to change and get testing done before Christmas again, I'm sure we would start hearing all those complaints that we used to hear from the elementary parents about, it seemed like we consolidated the first semester to try to make it happen, even when we had the leeway when we started school. I will tell you that. It was a lot of work.
I would venture to look back at the test scores. I would assume that the elementary test scores were better when those kids didn't have to go home for two and a half weeks and not see a school or a teacher and then take their tests.
I'm with you.
Yeah, I'd look at that data and say, you know, we could get Dr. Bultnick to look that up for us. Just kidding.
One last comment I would like to make. We have surveyed, we have had a survey on our website. There have been over 1,200 participants in the survey, and we have analyzed that data as well. One big concern, and I, that I can share with you, is about 53% of our constituents brought up the whole conversation of a full two-week winter vacation, winter break. And we tried to adhere to that as best we can, of course, with the Christmas falling on where it does in our calendar, it makes it pretty tough.
At our next board meeting, if we can just have this again for information, if that pleases the board, and have more of the pros and cons, more information to discuss or present to us, is the board okay with that? Ms. Guthrie?
Mr. Chair, what more do we need? I mean, I just, I just need to know, he has presented to us the recommendations, and I feel like they have exhausted every opportunity, unless you're going to ask them to go back and pull, again, that committee in and look at it. He has given us, I think, as much as they can give us regarding the schedule. It's just, that's just how I feel about it.
And that's what this work session's about. I'd like to hear everybody's opinion. I, for one...
I feel the same way, as is Ms. Guthrie.
Okay.
I mean, yeah, we don't have much chance. I mean, I'm telling you, the state controls how we do our calendar.
And that was the final question. It feels like if they had turned every stone that can be turned at this point, then I'm comfortable with what they've come up with. You know, if there's some questions, some hard questions that are still out there that we could take back and maybe change something, then fine. I don't have a problem continuing with it, but from what we've talked about now, I feel like that they've done an excellent job of getting to the point that we've gotten to.
And I'm seeing Mr. Howell raises a good question. And then my question's a little different than Ms. Roberts. I would say, who has tried this? Maybe we don't, we're not the pioneers, but has someone tried or made an attempt to do this, and why or why not did it work? But that's the only thing. I think it is a good legitimate question, and I agree with what some of the other board members are saying about, if you've exhausted all the options, and this is our calendar you're presenting to us, I'll leave that to the rest of this board to decide to adopt that or not. Mr. Howell?
My question is the same thing. Mr. Clinton, if you're telling me that the committee of 29 off and on various, and the stakeholders, and I'd like to see, I know you said you commented on what 53% said, that they'd like to see a full two weeks, amen to that. But I would like to see the survey results from that. But if your committee is already exhausted, and you went through what days are half-days, what days are full days, when can we finish by? Have we looked at extending the day? If you've exhausted that extending the day, and you know the pros and cons, and you're ready to say, hey, here's why we didn't go with that because of this reason, then I'm willing to shut it down and say, okay. But I want to be able to make a decision when I raise my hand to vote the calendar, that we looked at every option. And if that's an option that I came up with, I'm sure I'm probably not the only one that's ever thought of that. I know it has implications in the community of who picks up whose child when. As a parent, I would have liked to have a little extra time to get to where I was going or not have to pay as much daycare, but, I mean, that shouldn't influence it. The question is, back to what Mr. Dedman said, what were the test scores when we finished before the semester, I mean, before Christmas break versus after Christmas break? Because I'm like Mr. Dedman, I'm not an educator, but I'd have to think that it's greatly effective, because my kids would come home and say, Dad, I don't remember what I did the last week of school because I took a two-week break. Now, I'm not saying we make Christmas Day and Christmas Eve our only break. That'd get me out on another ladder, but I would like to know, has that rock been unturned? And if you can't tell me that y'all explored that option in some depth with some knowledge behind it, then I would like to at least hear what that is. And that's not a, I want you to understand, that is not a slide on your committee or you. That's just a, is that an aspect that we looked at or not?
I can tell you this, Mr. Howell. Looking at the constraints of the calendar, do I feel like we have thoroughly turned over every stone? Absolutely. We had a lot of discussion. We met on four different occasions. These meetings would range anywhere from two and a half to four hours. And it's a lot of questions, back and forth, bantering about, okay, what if we do this? What if we make an adjustment here? And what we're presenting here, in my opinion, is, has been as good as we could come up with.
Ms. Roberts?
I just want to put this out there. In case we ever want to really educate our parents, and would like to start a emailing or phone call campaign to our state legislators, I think the data that Mr. Dedman spoke about and the survey that Mr. Clinton thought about, we need to make that accessible to them, because, like he said, we could start a campaign and really talk to our state legislators about giving us more control.
Mr. Booker?
Well, as Mr. Dedman has pointed out, you all have had legislative meetings with your local, and House Representative Torbett each year has made sure that we are a part of any bill that is sponsored to give us calendar flexibility. So you have, he has heard you and has always made sure that we have representation in that. It typically ranges between 40 and 60 counties that are asking for it out of the 115 that exist.
Mr. Ramsey?
And that's what I was going to comment on. So basically, I would encourage us, the next time we sit down with a legislator committee there, that we show them evidence of the test scores. And, you know, we always ask, but now if we show, look, your test score's going to go up if you not start August 26th, you start August 22nd and end June 7th. You give us that much flexibility, we can fit that semester in there. So I think that's the angle we need to probably work off of. So I'm open to go on at our next meeting and go and approve, but I am open to trying to fix that problem.
Mr. Dedman?
This is my last comment. I would like to ask the state legislators why they did this in the first place. That would be my guess to them. I mean, what reasoning do they have to be doing that, so?
They had data that said that it would add $1 million of revenue to the bottom line, and every year since they started their rhetoric, I said, show me the money. And they can't do it.
Well, it's just like, you know, our teachers work seven and a half hours. I mean, if you add another hour a day to a teacher, you know, we're having a hard time keeping them now, you're going to have a difficult time keeping them more than a week, okay? And if you think it's difficult, not difficult to be in a classroom, go visit one and spend eight and a half hours.
And Mr. Clinton, that's my simple question, and I don't see where we can find days as the calendar looks. So is it simply to make it happen, we have to go to school longer in the day? We have to add hours to the school day?
Yes.
That's the only way it really can happen?
Correct.
And that's going to probably push me back to where we are with this calendar, if that's the case.
Well, and, you know, a change like that would be a big change for a community as well. I mean, it's very large.
All right. Okay, I'm hearing a consensus to keep this on the agenda to adopt on February the 20th then. And Mr. Dedman?
Last comment, and then I'm going to agree with Ms. Roberts. It's late now to even be talking about changing this for next year, okay? So I think the ideas that we have brought up and talked about today would be a good thing for Dr. Bultnick's people to follow up on, and that way would give us some more ammunition, because we need to let our parents know kind of which way we're going, so that's it.
And to Mr. Howell's point, we can amend the calendar if something happens later, like if they change the legislature, I mean, the law. Mr. Howell?
So a question, so I pointed for clarification. What is Item 6 on the Instruction Committee agenda tomorrow for extension of school day?
We won't discuss that. We're talking about some specific schools, and also just some extension activities, but not a wide sweeping change to all the school schedules throughout the district. It's a very different item. After-school support for some very specific schools.
Any other questions or comment about the calendar? We're going to keep it on the agenda for the February 20th meeting for adoption as presented to us tonight.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Duncan.
And Mr. Clinton.
I was looking down at my notes, I'm sorry, I apologize, Mr. Clinton. Okay. All right, before we go into closed session, I'd just like to make a couple of comments. I was so proud to see every board member show up last Tuesday to our joint meeting with the commissioners. I felt like it was a very positive meeting. I heard comments from several board members that it was positive, and there didn't seem to be tension in the room with the commissioners. They seemed to be open and hearing what we were saying. They were really encouraged by our school choice recommendations. So thank you for the board for that attendance. It was short notice, and I just could not feel prouder when everybody showed up.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Ms. Guthrie?
And we were proud of you for your presentation that you made.
Thank you, you're kind. Mr. Dedman?
And also, congratulations to our county commissioners. Every one of them also showed up, so that shows us...
Yes, sir. Mr. Brown made that point loud and clear there, too, that every one of them showed up. Thank you, Mr. Dedman. Ms. Guthrie received a Unity Award, and I just needed, as I read through it, wanted to point out what that award stands for. It recognizes individuals with, that build bridges of unity through their work and leadership and community service. And as I read those words, I just couldn't think of a better description of that award, and again, just wanted to make sure, everybody, we recognize Ms. Guthrie. That's an incredible word. And with that, we need to go into closed session for North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A5 for property. And with that, we need to go into closed session for North Carolina General Statute 143-318 dot 11A5 for property and the same statute, paragraph A6 for personnel.
You need a second.
I need a motion.
I need, I make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Ramsey, second by Ms. Cherry. All those in favor, show by raising your hand. And we're going into closed session.